About that. I'm going to do it one more time. I'd like to call the meeting to order. It's September 24th. It's now six o'clock. Please join Councilmember Stip in the pledge allegiance and followed by the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Almighty God, pour out your Holy Spirit on your faithful people. Keep us steadfast in your grace and truth. Protect and deliver us in times of temptation. Defend us against all enemies and grant to our city your saving peace. Keep watch over the men and women serving our community, our state, and our nation. Be with them in all they do. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Councilmember Stip. All right, we're going to go right on to the communications. We'll receive an update on the economic development projects, which I know you're all waiting for. Deputy City Manager, Wannette Reed, will begin with some introductory comments and followed by a presentation from Harold Stewart, interim Economic Development Director.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's both an exciting time and kind of a bittersweet time because tonight is Harold Stewart's last council meeting. Harold was hired to fill the Economic Development Director as an interim position almost ten months ago. So he will be handing over the torch to Lori Gray tomorrow, who will be her first day. And he just wanted to take this opportunity to give you an update as to where we are with some of the projects and what's going on in economic development. So I'm going to turn it over to Harold.
Great. Welcome, Harold.
Good evening. Welcome, Mayor.
Thank you.
It's pretty nice to see you again.
Thank you.
And the Council. I'm going to take just a few minutes and talk a little bit about what's been happening, not just this year, but the last couple of years, to give a little more perspective to the activity level that's been taking place. As you all know, Goodyear has been more than successful in recent times in recruitment of a variety of kinds of businesses and business activities. And I'm going to just kind of walk through some of that. And again, thinking back, this is the last, basically, twenty-seven months. So in that time, we've worked with businesses that have generated about three thousand jobs. Now, those aren't all in place yet, but they are moving forward. There's about $662 million of new investment in the community tied to the jobs and just tied, obviously, to the investment in buildings and equipment. One of the things we focused a bit on is developing the infrastructure, the support foundation for the marketing program, and I'll talk about that just briefly a little bit later. Been trying to spend a lot of time improving, increasing the amount of entrepreneurship in the community. That's not only important to the future of the community, but it's important to the folks that have ideas and ambitions to open their own business. We've seen the first and hopefully soon to be under construction adaptive reuse of a facility from a cinema to a medical space, and that'd be great when that's done. Worked with higher education, recruited some higher education resources, the latest one being Columbia College. Spent our energy trying to fill in those employment corridors, and that's hopefully a part of what the three thousand jobs will do, but we're obviously, we need more. Excuse me. We've worked with retail, entertainment, and restaurants, and we'll start by taking a little more detailed look at that. This listing represents eighty different businesses that have either opened in the last couple of years, or under construction, or planned to be in the city of Goodyear. Now, there's a wide variety there, and some of them are, you know, have been around a while, some of them are expanding, some are moving from place A to place B. But the level of activity has increased, and the level of activity doesn't seem to be dropping off. And of course, we have potential for new developments. That would be, you know, with the Stark Enterprises, who's purchased the corner of northeast corner of McDowell and Pebble Creek and the market at Estrella Falls. So there's that kind of new level of activity and that kind of new commitment to the community, and I'm sure you're going to see more of that based on what we've been working with. We've had a lot of success, which you've all seen. You can see the magic big buildings that seem to be getting bigger with each development. And that's been something that the staff and working with the owners and other folks have spent a lot of time capturing those. But if you look at this particular slide, the one thing you'll see is it really hasn't slowed down a lot. So in the next year, we're expecting to see about three and a half million square feet of new spec space either being built or constructed and available. And there are seven projects, which this list or identifies, where companies are actually going to move into those projects, and that's another two and a half million square feet of space. And with no surprise, we're expecting at least the first and perhaps more of the data centers to enter the community and become part of the base of the economy. I mentioned a little bit about new medical or additional medical, some of which, I should go back one second to the retail, and there's eighty projects there. Our staff has been involved in by far the majority of those. But just to give sort of a proper credit, while we've been involved in the majority of those, city staff in some form or another has been involved in all of them. So it's not just an economic development program that makes these things happen. So jump back to warehouse. So with the medical office, we, medical and office, we've obviously seen, you know, adelante and the cinema becoming future medical space. But we're also now working on development of office space, and that's become kind of an important thing in the program and something that's important, obviously, to attracting other things other than industrial or warehousing kind of operations. We're currently working with one potential owner developer of a three-story building that would be professional office space and hope to have that structured and working with them over the next few months. Retail, you know, there's that list we just looked at, but there's a lot of retail activity, but I think there are a couple of important pieces there. One is, we all know that there's been a loss of some retailers, you know, Toys R Us, Babies R Us, being one of the biggest losses, that's like sixty-four thousand square feet poof overnight that was emptied out. So there's been about one hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of empty space, but already a hundred thousand of that has been spoken for, and there are people looking at the other remaining spaces. So it is, on the one hand, bad that we lost them, lost those businesses, but on the other hand, it is not like long-term it's going to take to get them filled up. So that's a big plus. And we're also aware of about twenty new retail projects that we see coming online. Hotels, we obviously have hotels in the community, but there are four additional hotels that are being planned, two of them well into the planning process, and that would be a True By Hilton and a Marriott product, which will all be built or open in nineteen. And that's a, that's a big plus, having those available to us. So with a couple of areas that we don't talk about a lot about, but that are extremely important, and that's been the Innovation Hub and the work with small businesses and entrepreneurs. And as you can see, this, this has been going on for several years now, and the startup program, or the ASU Startup Program, as it's been known, there have been over a hundred and twenty individuals that have gone through that program. And as of last count, there's actually eighteen-plus small entrepreneurial businesses that have come out of that program. And that's, that's a very healthy number, considering we essentially have one staff person doing all that. So that's a big plus and a very, a great value. You can see the numbers there, I won't go through everything, but the mentoring, lots of one-on-one mentoring with individuals. We have the Business Builders Program, that's a monthly meetup where businesses, any business that wants to can show up and have a conversation about what their needs are, what other businesses do. Interesting new program is the Hub Gen Program. This is really aimed at thirteen- to nineteen-year-olds. These are young people that have maybe a great idea, or what they feel is a great idea for maybe a product or a small business, and it's really a great thing to see that level of interest, that the interest in that age group. And finally, there's the Mastermind Group. That's a group of businesses that get together and they actually, it's very, it's more of a formal thing, you apply to be a member, and they share, like other places, they share information, trade information. Final thing that we don't spend much time on, but is extremely critical to the project, the program, is the marketing program. And you've probably all had a chance to look at the, we say enhanced website, basically it's a new website that was completed back in March, and that's gotten a lot of attention, and we've had some very positive comments about it. That was all, I shouldn't say all, but like ninety percent done by staff, which is both good in terms of the quality of what we have, of the folks we have on staff, which also makes it a little less expensive to do. And we've had some other things, as you can see on their editorials in Business Facilities Magazine. We've had four of the Innovation Hub graduates get recognition in the West Valley View in recent months. We have a new thing called the Biz Buzz Page, which, if I don't trip over my tongue saying it, it's actually kind of fun, it's interesting, because it's about the businesses that are coming to town. Excuse me. And at the same time, it's also just some little information pieces about business and about activities going on. So it adds a little bit of spark to the site, and we're really kind of having fun with the Tetris. Social media, we've moved into more than we have in the past, and that's beginning to have a real positive benefit for us. And our marketing, I should finish by saying that we do, you know, we do traditional print marketing, but we do a lot of media, a lot of social media and digital marketing also. So what about tomorrow? Well, tomorrow, actually, you'll have a permanent director, so I guess that's one important thing. But, you know, one of the things that I, that we're kind of confident in, and we've been talking about this on staff for some time, we know we're going to see increase in technology, the presence of technology companies. Generally speaking, as you've probably known or heard, when data centers come into your city, technology companies follow. It's sort of their lifeline, and the closer they can be to it, the better it is for them in terms of their, their business services, their business activities. Going to see more office space development in a couple of different places up around the regional center site, in the old, what was before the mall area. You'll see some development like that there. We've seen some interest in the southwest corner of Bullard and McDowell. So beginning to see that, that change that we have not had experience with for a while. Expanded medical, mentioned that a little bit, but you know, you have some new things, not occurring not only here, but like the standalone emergency facilities and those kind of things. They change the profile of the medical community in a variety of ways, and obviously, we have our big partners in CTCI and others. You know, still, still see, I mentioned the spec buildings, you're still going to see more manufacturing, you're certainly going to see more warehousing of some kind, or distribution, or things of that nature to fill those big spaces. It's going to continue to attract new kinds of business to the city. Don't know exactly what they're going to be, because there's always a surprise waiting for you when you say absolutely. So we'll just say that you're going to get more. More interest, more focus on education, building our education base. That's important to the companies we work with, it's obviously valuable to the community, and staff will spend considerable amount of time trying to expand that. Entrepreneurial programs, you know, there's, there's nothing like having an entrepreneur in your community that is successful on their own, or if you can help them be successful on their own, and I know that there's going to be continued energy in that, and the interest in just the months that I've been here has continued to expand and a lot of new faces getting involved. The other interesting thing about that part of the program is that there are businesses that are, have been in place for a while that are showing up to go through the startup school. So they see a benefit to their existing business for that participation. And of course, everybody wants more entertainment, the right restaurants, the right stores. A lot of that, I showed you, has happened. That's, that can sometimes be a funny end of the business, because predicting what retailers are going to do is, is a little bit, it's just easier to get the winning lottery ticket. It's a little challenge at times, but... So in short, you know, this is, this has just been, obviously, for me, really an excellent time in my career. I think this is my fourth or fifth retirement. Sometimes, some people, some people just don't have a learning curve. But, you know, in fairness and honesty, this has been an excellent part of my, of my career and my life in economic development. I would be really remiss not to brag on the staff. I've worked with a lot of economic development staffs, with very good people, very, very talented people. But this group, if you look at the size, and you look at the energy, and you look at the professionalism, they just do a real top-notch job. And at least three of them, I don't know if the fourth one is here.
Well, let them stand. Would you please stand so we can clap?
Yeah.
Come on, stand up there.
That was in lieu of a bonus. Sorry, just couldn't pass it up. But nevertheless, I mean, they really are a top-notch group, and you, and I know that Lori, I've known Lori for a long time, and I know she's going to be really pleased to work with them. The other couple of things that I just wanted to say is, first of all, Wannette sort of guided me through the early months that I was here, and without her guidance, I would still be out in the parking lot looking for the right door to get in, because I arrived at the office and found that the door was locked. So, but it, that was extremely helpful and made the transition very easy. The, you know, the other departments we work with, and we work most closely, generally speaking, with Development Services and Engineering, and spending a lot more time with our water folks with Public Works, but every department that we've worked with, it's just been absolutely terrific. And even those that we don't normally interact with make a huge difference when we're marketing this community. You know, the streets are working, the lights are working, the trash is picked up. All that sounds pretty mundane, but I tell you, companies notice that, and you guys should be proud of that. And of course, with the city manager, she was wise enough not to be here this evening, but it's just been a delight working with her, and she's provided guidance and assistance in many ways. And finally, and maybe most important, which is not often recognized, is we couldn't, we, economic development people could not do their job if there was not support from the elected officials. It's just real simple. You know, we can run around and chase our tail all day long, but if you guys aren't supportive and you don't believe in what's going on, the companies spot that right off the top. And this city's fortunate to have its council do that. So I want to thank you for that and for my time here.
Don't go away, don't go away. Right there, Harold. Would anybody like to make any comments? Yes, I'll start. Brandon?
Sure, I'll start. Yes, I just want to thank you, Harold, for your time here. We've obviously, I mean, obviously from your port, the city has done, has done well under your direction and all the rest of staff as well. So we've done a lot of, a lot of neat things in the Economic Development Department, and yeah, couldn't be more proud to have you guys in our city. And yeah, I just, I think the Innovation Hub, the education progress we've done, all of your businesses and development, I think Goodyear is definitely poised to keep, keep growing, and it's been a lot of hard work, years of hard work from staff and everyone else. So I just thank you for that, and thank you for holding the reins and running the department while we're looking for a permanent, a permanent person. So thank you so much for, for keeping it going. So thank you.
It's been my pleasure.
Jerry?
You're going to hear this a lot now, um, thank you so much for all your hard work, and thank all the staff too. I, I think you led a really great team, and you showed us a lot of the work that's been completed, and I know you've planted seeds for a lot more that you can't put on there yet, and we're going to see those seeds are going to grow and continue to grow. So your hard work and, you know, and your work with the staff is going to lead us to a very bright future. So thank you for all your hard work and dedication, and I wish you a wonderful fifth or sixth retirement, or seventh retirement. You'll keep coming back, I think, so congratulations.
Always have to leave town some point, you know. Thank you very much.
Molly?
Well, Harold, I'm sure you didn't think you were going to be here ten months, because we didn't think you were going to be here ten months. It's been a pretty amazing ride, but thank you for all you've done. I know we're anxious to get the new Economic Development Director on board and, and continue to move forward. It's, it's quite a challenge to attract these companies and retail and restaurants to our city, and you do put our best foot forward. So thank you for all you do, and it's been a pleasure working with you.
Thank you for your support, Mayor.
Again, Harold, thank you very much for all you've done in this interim time. And again, I haven't been on the Economic Development website recently, but I really enjoyed this presentation. There was a lot of things in there, to be honest with you. All the activity, I mean, and that one capsulization shows a lot of action going on in the city of Goodyear. And again, I don't know if it's on your story on your webpage, but a lot of, in my view, a lot of that could really be in there, selling the city of Goodyear, because that's a great story you put together tonight. So I want to thank you for everything you've done.
Bill?
I tell the story, they do the work, it's great.
Harold, obviously, thank you, and I won't beat you over the head with the thanks, I think we've got six down the road already. I do have, would like to certainly acknowledge the staff. Your success has been their success and vice versa, and we've all benefited from that. So to the staff of the Economic Development Department, thanks for supporting Harold all along, and you certainly made for a better city. And I want to publicly acknowledge Councilmember Campbell when we said, oh, it won't take us but four or five months to get an Economic Development Director. I was wrong, so I want that on the public record.
What did I know, Bill?
But good luck in your, in your next endeavor, because I don't think it's retirement for some reason.
Well, we'll see, I would be surprised myself.
Laura?
I also want to add my thanks, and especially for the orientation and how you showed how economic development works hand-in-hand with development services and engineering, and that you really are an integrated entity as you work to bring these great projects to the city. And, and as an interim, you know, sometimes people get a bad rap, but you've really been invested, you've been a stakeholder, and I want to thank you for the legacy that you've left here.
And lastly, the mayor, you're someone very special. You have a great sense of humor, you have vast experience, and I don't even think half of the people know all that you've done in your lifetime of careers. So we were so lucky to get you, and just your personality and how you came and you blended in with the team, and you wanted to make them the best. You weren't there just to say, I'm here, I'm going to do this, and you brought them up and taught them things that they'll never forget. So as the mayor, I thank you. I loved your briefings. Again, I love the humor with the briefings, that always helps, especially whether it's something you don't want to tell me, but anyway, so good, and I wish you well, and I'm sure we're going to see you around the campus. You're not, you don't live very far from us, so you never know.
You never know.
And we...
Thank you all, and good night.
All right, thank you. All right, now's the time for citizens who would like to address the city council on any non-agenda item. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, then we'll just go forward. We'll go to the consent agenda, and it's approval of the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read consent agenda items six point one to six point seven by title only, please?
Six point one, approval of minutes. Six point two, approve the budget transfers for fiscal year 2019. Six point three, approve expenditure of $1,914,300 for the COG well number twenty-six in raw water transmission main. Six point four, approve the amended and restated intergovernmental agreement to provide integrated services to children and families at the Southwest Family Advocacy Center. Six point five, adopt resolution number 2018-1896 approving the modification of assessment number three within the McDowell Road Commercial Corridor Improvement District. Six point six, ratify a grant application from the Goodyear Police Department to the U.S. Department of Justice Office of Justice Programs and approve a budget transfer. Six point seven, approve the final plat for the sale place parcel one.
Thank you. Are there speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, let's go on. Could I have a motion and a second to approve the, excuse me, to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion by Councilman Campbell and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Open for council, we'll just go to roll call, sorry. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Now, let's jump into business. I'd like to remind council to refrain from asking questions until the staff presentations are complete and there's a motion on the table. So seven point one on business is to conduct, conduct a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately two point two, twenty-eight acres from agriculture urban to light industrial, industrial. Open public meeting? Hello, Steve. Steve Caretti, Planner Three, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Do you have a rezoning action before you tonight? It is two point two eight acres right here, west side of Bullard, about halfway between Van Buren and Yuma. As you can see from this aerial, pretty much everything immediately surrounding the property is in agricultural production. To the west, we have Bullard Wash, Centerra Residential here, we have Goodyear Airport here to the south. To the east, across Bullard, we have Chewy.com, Michael Lewis, another large industrial building here, and right here at GMC, right where we are tonight. And again, this is the property here, right here, this square on the west side of Bullard. This is the general plan land use map, and this shows you that in this red, the general plan says this area surrounding the property is for business and commerce, and that includes such things as light industrial, office, retail, commercial, services. The purple is industrial, the green is open space, and the yellow is neighborhoods, generally residential, neighborhood, commercial, things like that. And this is zoning map, and here's the property right here, Bullard. Purple is industrial. You can see the subject property, properties surrounding it to the west and to the east, that's agricultural urban. The yellow is planned area development, pretty much predominance surrounding it. With the property, it's currently zoned agricultural urban now. APS is the property owner. They desire to construct an electrical substation on the property. The route they chose was to rezone the property to I-1, light industrial. Within the I-1 light industrial zone, an electrical substation is a permitted use. So with the growing demand for electrical service in this area, they chose to rezone it to I-1. Because it is a rezoning, it does require public hearings before the Planning and Zoning Commission and city council. Notice for the public's hearings was provided in accordance with our city standards. To date, staff has not received any opposition or public inquiries on this project. Planning and Zoning Commission considered this at their regular meeting of September twelve. No opposition was voiced on the project. They voted five-zero to, for the recommendation of approval to the city council. Staff, in our review, we do find this rezoning is consistent with the general plan. We do find it will be compatible with the surrounding area, given the future industrial commerce use that is planned for this area. As such, staff and the Planning and Zoning Commission, we are recommending approval subject to those three stipulations found in the attached ordinance 2018-1407. With that, Mayor, that concludes my presentation. Staffs available for questions? There's also a representative from APS available for any questions.
Very good. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, that's, I'm going to close the public hearing, and will the city clerk please read resolution number 2018-1901 by title only?
Adopt resolution number 2018-1901, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled official supplementary zoning map number 18-08 and exhibit B, legal description, rezoning exhibit Arizona Public Service Company.
All right, can I have a motion and a second to adopt resolution 2018-1901? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell and a second from, I think, Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion? Councilman Hampton?
I have a question for it. The, is this all the land that they have there, or is there more land that they're going to re, want to rezone there? Just the full amount of their property?
Mayor, council members, at this stage, we're looking at the two point two eight Mayor, council members, at this stage, we're looking at the 2.28 acres, and they currently have a site plan application in for a substation for, uh, that property. If they have future plans, I, I am not aware at this time.
All right. I was just curious if it, yeah, if that was enough for their full scope of work, if they're eventually gonna come back and, if they could expand it, or is there no land around it that they own that they, we could expand, so?
Mayor, council members, if there is land they could expand in the future.
All right. And then, are there any setbacks from that? I see that they're, any setbacks? Can the, can the business be right up against it, or does it need to be a certain feet away?
Mayor, council, all, the industrial zone will have setbacks associated with it, uh, especially off of Bullard and then off of internal. It depends how properties all line up, but yes, sir, there will be setbacks and buffers.
Is there any, um, they get to decide how, how it looks, or is it to our standards, or is there room for, if we wanted to put, for some reason, artwork or other things near it or around it? Is that something we could do, or is that different standards, or, just, just curious what the standards are for that?
Well, at this point, the wall and improvements associated with the substation are what you've, I should have shown these. Uh, this is the Pebble Creek Substation.
Mm-hmm.
And this is the Van Buren.
We don't want.
It will be just like typical wall, 10 feet.
Okay. Yeah, I was just curious if we could, if we wanted to make it look better in the future, we could possibly do that, but I don't know if we want to or not, I was just curious. So, all right, that's all the questions I had. Thank you.
No questions. Are you finished?
Yep.
All right, any other questions? All right, let's have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Well, then, will the city clerk please read an ordinance number 2018-1407 by title only, please?
Adopt Ordinance number 2018-1407, conditionally rezoning approximately 2.28 acres from the AU Agricultural Urban Zoning District to the I-1 Light Industrial Zoning District. Amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt ordinance 2018-1407?
So moved. Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano and a second by Councilman Pizzillo. Uh, roll call vote, open for council discussion anymore? All right, let's call the vote.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, we'll go to the next business item, the 7.2, is a public hearing to consider the amendment to the El Cidro Final PAD Amendment. Open the public hearing, and Karen Greaver, Planner 3, will be presenting. Karen?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. Outlined in red is the El Cidro PAD. It extends from Lower Buckeye Road on the north to south of MC-85 on the south, and from Citrus Road on the west to east of Cotton Lane on the east. This is the El Cidro Land Use Plan. You probably recall it from back in July when Beazer Homes proposed a PAD amendment on the property they own within El Cidro. You approved a rear setback reduction from 20 feet to 18 feet for one-story homes in the property they own in 1D. This amendment before you tonight is for the property that BET owns, which is pretty much the rest of the property, and it is to modify various development standards within the LD1, 2, and 3 land use categories. So, that's the three lighter shades of brown. And this is just a, a lotting plan of the residential portions of El Cidro. This is the area that Beazer received the amendment approval for, and the rest of the property is BET's. These are the red lines for the modifications that they want to make to the stip, to the development standards. In the LDR1 category, they are modifying the side yard setback from 5 and 10 feet to 5 and 5 feet, and then there's a consequential increase in the lot coverage as well. That'll go from 55 to 65. In the LD2 category, the, uh, same setback reduction that Beazer had, the rear setback going from 20 feet to 18 feet for single-story homes only. In the LDR3 category, again, the rear yard setback reduction, the side yard setback reduction, and then again, an increase in maximum lot coverage. This is the graphic that we showed you during the BE, the Beazer hearing. As you can see, the reduction from 20 feet to 18 feet in the rear yard setback is, is not really even noticeable. Uh, staff did have some concerns about the side yard setback reductions down to the 5 feet, because you end up with 10 feet in between homes. So, we worked with BET, and they came up with this enhanced landscape package that would be put in with the homes that are 5 feet from the side setbacks. And this is the standard landscape package they had, so as you can see, it's enhanced to try to reduce that canyon effect that may appear from the homes being 10 feet apart. And we have also stipulated to the installation of this landscape package for the homes that have the 5-yard setbacks. And this, whoops, and this is just the final development standards table that will be in the PAD that all the developers and home builders within El Cidro will adhere to. Another thing that we did while we were processing this application was to consolidate the stipulations of approval. There was the original 2007 El Cidro PAD, as well as six amendments, all of which had a list of stipulations for each one of them. And so, anytime we were trying to process any applications, we would have to be looking at six sets of stipulations. So, we have worked with BET, and we now have one PAD with one set of development standards and one set of stipulations. And, and how we consolidated them, there were a lot of repeat steps. We got rid of the repeats. We brought steps into conformance with a, a development agreement that was approved a couple of years back, and we also brought the steps into conformance with our current zoning ordinance and our current engineering development standards. So, good thing all around in, in doing that. Good for the home builders and good for, for staff when it comes to administering the PAD. And, and prior to, to answering any questions you may have, um, I wanted to talk to you about the P, P and Z in the vote that was held when they reviewed this application. There was a motion to approve the PAD amendment as proposed, the amendment of all the development standards. And that was a motion to recommend approval that failed by a vote of 3 to 2. Now, you know, the 3 was more than the 2, but with the PA, the P and Z bylaws required that there be a quorum of the commission that affirmatively votes. And because there's seven members on the commission, you have to have four affirmative votes. So, although they had three affirmative votes, it wasn't enough for it to, to be passed. So, that motion to recommend approval failed. So, if you have any questions about that or any of the modifications, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Oh, I think we have someone. Please state your name and your address.
Jeff Bliley, 701 North 44th Street, uh, here on behalf of the applicant. I'll just do a, a brief overview of what we're, we're asking for today, and then happy to answer any questions when I'm finished. Um, as you know, we processed a, a similar PAD amendment for Beazer, and we were tracking them both at the same time, this, this amendment and the Beazer amendment, to address the, both the rear yard setback issue, which was caused, uh, when we went to the detached sidewalks a number of years ago, that caused this need to amend that, uh, front yard setback, rear yard setback, in order that we'd maintain that 20 feet of stacking for the cars, so they wouldn't overlap the driveway. And so, I think, so when we were processing these, we had them both going at the same time, and we were hopeful that they'd be on the same agenda, but unfortunately, the BET application got bumped a bit, and, uh, one of the reasons was to work through the consolidation of these stipulations and trying to get a PAD document that was cohesive, uh, given the number of amendments that we've done over the years. So, over the past couple of months, we've, we've been able to do that, we've gone through that effort, and I think now what you've got before you tonight is a nice cohesive document, one set of stipulations that we're all very comfortable with. Uh, with regard to the side yard setback, and unfortunately, I wasn't at the P and Z commission hearing, um, so I couldn't address these directly, but, uh, just for your, to go back in history, half of the BE, of the El Cidro project already has the 5 and 5 setbacks. So, what we basically have is four residential land use categories with four different lot sizes, half of which have 5 and 10, and half of which have 5 and 5. Uh, the problem with that, one of the problems, is that it creates, uh, a lack of diversity in the project itself, because when we have, uh, a 5 and 10 on a, for instance, on a 55 foot-wide lot, and then a, excuse me, on a, on a 50, and then a 5 and 5 on a 55, what you have, what you end up with is the same home product on, on two different, with lots. And so, if we don't make this amendment, the problem's gonna be is that we're gonna have basically two different home products through the whole thing, and we'd really like to diversify, get to the four home products. Uh, from our, from our perspective and from the builder's perspective, they don't see the reduction from the 5 and 10 down to 5 and 5 as being very dramatic. It just reduces the overall from 15 to 10, which, uh, they, they're seeing this is, it's pretty standard. I think even this council recognized the 5 and 5 as being, uh, a very desirable and, and a permissible side yard setback when it adopted an ordinance last December, allowing staff to administratively allow 5 and 5 side yard setbacks, uh, if a number of conditions are met. And so, when we did our application, even though we're not going through the administrative process, we actually are going to council and asking it through a PAD amendment, we did go through that. Staff asked us to go through that analysis, which we did, and that's how we came up with meeting all those criteria, and a number of the things that we're doing is we're providing the curb-separated sidewalks. That's one of the things that you can do to try to, to garner the 5 and 5. We've also enhanced the landscaping, not just the landscaping, as you see on the exhibit here, but the overall open space within the project exceeds both the minimums, uh, for overall and the minimums for active. Uh, we've got almost a 10-acre central park, which is one of the other things they wanted to see, is not just a lot of retention areas, but a, a large centralized park, it's almost like a regional park within the middle of the project. We've got trails connecting the entire project to all the different open spaces, as well as we have a, electrical, one of the WAPA easements runs through the project, which then provides additional access over to the canyon trails. So, you've got kind of a, a regional connectivity. Uh, the, the last thing we did with regard to the enhanced landscaping was, uh, the staff said, "Well, why don't we come up with something that can try to, uh, buffer and, and, and mitigate some of the effect of reducing from 15 down to 10?" And that's what we did with this, uh, adding additional trees and bushes to the front yard, which we're gonna require, it's in the PAD, all home builders will be required to do that, and we'll put it in our, our CCNRs as well. So, um, we're hopeful that, um, you can approve our amendment tonight. Uh, we have Beazer already out there building homes, and they're, we've seen, uh, a lot more interest in the project, and we think, uh, with this amendment, we'll be able to continue rolling out those lots and, and really be able to get this project, uh, finally off the ground. Uh, I've only been working on it for now for 13 years, so it's, it'd be nice to, it's, it's nice to finally get something accomplished on this project. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. I'm going to close the public hearing. And will the city clerk please read Reso, Resolution 2018-1898 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution number 2018-1898, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk entitled Supplementary Zoning Map Number 18-02B, El Cidro Final PAD Legal Description, and El Cidro PAD Final PAD, June 2018.
Thank you. Can I have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2018-1898? Motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Vice Mayor Campbell made the motion, Councilman Pizzillo made the second. Open for council discussion? Councilman Pizzillo?
I'm not sure, maybe Karen or the, uh, the builder representative. You know, I under, I understand the, uh, uh, demand for the smaller lots. I underst, uh, understand, uh, where the market's going to. Well, the one question that always comes to my mind is, uh, is the various elevations, diversity, as you had mentioned earlier, uh, because, you know, um, and I hate to compare us to others, but every time I go to Verado and I see small lots, and I see the diversity in the product, you know, and how they break all those up, uh, it looks great. So, to get to my question, my question is, how many different elevation types do you have for this particular development? And my biggest concern is, when you go down the street, will you be able to tell the neighbor who's looking for it, "My house is this." You know, there's not a whole lot of them, at least spread-wise, you're gonna have some breaks as far as what those, uh, what do you call, elevations are next to each other.
Sure. Yeah, well, first off, we're not gonna, we're not reducing the lot sizes, so all the lot sizes are staying the same. What this will allow would be a little bit larger home on the lot sizes that we already have. Uh, and, and frankly, this will allow for the, the more diversity. If we don't get this, what'll happen is there'll be much less diverse home product in here, because what'll happen is it'll create, the 55s and the 50s will have the same home product on them because of the way it's set up now. So, this is gonna provide a lot more home diversification. I, I can't tell you how many elevations each builder's gonna be in. I think Beazer came in with seven or eight different elevations for their 120 lots. Uh, so, I, I believe that's quite diverse for that, that number of lots, and I think, like I say, this, this amendment will really allow that more diversification.
And I appreciate that. That's what I'm kinda looking forward, when, when you get into the smaller lots, more diverse, more of the, uh, elevation type, so when you're going down the street, they all, they'll look the same. They all have their own little tweaks, their own little, uh, additions, you know, even though the product inside may be three or four models. To me, the outside look, as you're going down streets, bear very important, so I appreciate, uh, the number of, uh, what do you call, elevations that they're working on. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Stip?
Thank you for, uh, your presentation. That helped answer a lot of the questions that, um, that I had going into it. I, I too was very concerned when reading the material about the 5 and 5 setback, um, just from my own experience on the 5-foot side of my home, and how I could hear everything that was going on in the house next door. So, I appreciated that the Planning and Zoning Commission was concerned about that as well. I'm not sure that a tree in the front yard is gonna fix that problem, um, because houses are still gonna be relatively on top of one another. I do agree with Councilmember Pizzillo that, um, that this is the, the direction that the market is headed, and, um, and I do, uh, I'm encouraged by the diversity of the product. So, it, um, I don't, I'm not sure that I have a question here, to be honest with you. I think I'm just making more of a statement that, um, again, I, I think as we, we look at it, it might not be what I want, but I'm not buying, I'm not buying, I'm not buying in there. Um, but I, I'm also probably 30 years older than the next, than the millennial home buyer as well. So, um, I think, uh, I think, I think this becomes, uh, a statement to, to the staff that if we've met the stipulations, and I think that is my question, that allows the 5 and 5, if, if we've met that criteria, then this really becomes the weight on you and the decision that you make to recommend this, this going forward under the new guidelines that we adopted. So, um, for me, this is the first step of us going, "Well, you know what, we're gonna take our responsibility, we're gonna give it to staff, so you've got it, don't let us down." Thanks for the presentation.
Councilmember Loretano?
I, I pretty much echo the comments that, that were just made. You know, when you look at it, you say, "Oh, it's 5, that might be a little close," and then you start measuring out how far that is, and it, it's not changing the lot size, so, um, basically adding a, a more of a house. And I, I know that's where the market is, and that's what people are looking for, and by adding the larger park, I think people want a lot more, um, I want to say ma, maybe not even lock and leave, but less maintenance, less yard work. Um, they want community activities, you know, community parks and recreation facilities. I think this will give us the urban, more, a little bit more of an urban feel. I looked at the planning and zoning notes, and there were some very good questions about meeting the fire code, which it does. Um, so this isn't something that's too, um, unusual for what is being built now. And I agree, different elevations. And I agree, different elevations, different features on the house, options, different options for the package for the front yard, that can really make a big change, but I think these will be very successful, because it's my understanding from everything I'm seeing, this is what our, this is what people want now, and this is what sells. So we can put larger lots, and, you know, and they're just not gonna sell. So I think this is where the market's going, and obviously, if the market changes, then we'll have another discussion. If it changes, it's another 10 years, and it does. You go around some of these communities, you can see when the market has changed, you can see these houses were built at a certain period of time in different communities, structure, just ideas, so I think the comments from Councilmember Pazillo about mixing it up kinda like a Verado thing will be, it'll be a lovely product, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other, yes, Councilman Hampton?
What was the staff's, what was the planning committee's issues with it? Was it just the fire, or was it other things from that, that they, why they voted no, I guess, or why some people did?
One of the commission members was hoping to see a street view of this exhibit, you know, she was okay, it's looking at the aerial, but was hoping to see a street view, so she could understand the streetscape better. Another one of the commissioners was a little concerned about the perceived value or change in value on the neighborhood that the smaller setback might have.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other comments? Yes, Laura?
I did watch the P N Z meeting, because this is an interesting thing with the setbacks, and I was here for the Beazer and the two-foot setback, but if I don't recall, that there was a change in the side for the Beazer, so this is a new. But in the presentation, it was said that you already have half your product zoned for five and five, is that correct?
Yes, it's, this is an old project, and we've been here a number of times, and a number of years ago, we did get half the project reduced to five and five, and at that time, staff added some additional stipulations to enhance the architecture on the home products that required, so that carries forward.
Okay. I think relying on trees solely is probably not gonna sustain over the years, because the trees get blown over, they, you know, get into things, and they get torn down, and before you know it, you don't have two or three trees anymore. I see in neighborhoods, trees go down, and they don't, new ones don't typically come up. And so, maybe Karen can explain to me what the canyon effect is, since that's new terminology to me.
Our concern was primarily if you had a two-story home next to a two-story home, and they were 10 feet apart, as you're driving down the street, it's like, "Uh-oh, look at that canyon between those houses," that's where that came from. But, you know, we don't always have the two-story homes, a lot of people don't wanna do that anymore either, they're going for the one-story homes, but it was a situation that we thought should be addressed, and this was one way that we thought that could be addressed.
Okay, so there was an amendment made allowing the five and five? Something in December, an ordinance?
In previous amendments that the E T had processed, they had taken some of their parcels and reduced the side setbacks from five and 10 to five and five. What Beazer did was just the rear yard setback going from 20 to 18.
Okay, so the five and five has been approved by council previously?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
You have been coming to see us for a very long time, for as long as I can remember, even before I got on council nine years ago, I heard about L C D R, and I'm excited to think that you're actually going to do something, maybe.
No one more than I am.
I bet. I do know that, I live in a five and five too, and it has its advantages and it has its disadvantages, but being a homeowner, we figured out how to make it work, it wasn't that difficult. I'm sure you're going to be doing energy-saving windows and this, that, and the other, that will cut down some of the noise and that sort of thing, but we're delighted to know that we may soon have this built, because we've got folks just waiting to get in there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, you have been here a long time, since I've been on the council since 2005, so, and I know the toil you've gone through with this, and with the downturn and all the things that happened, but I wanna thank you for looking out for the buyer, knowing what the buyer wants. There's nothing more frustrating to look for a home in the price range you want, which can't find it, and this allows someone to buy a bigger and better home possibly, because of the amount of property that it sits on, and I think it can make a great neighborhood, so I'm looking forward to it. So I'm gonna ask this council if we could have a roll call vote.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please read ordinance 2018-1408 by title only?
Adopt ordinance number 2018-1408, conditionally rezoning the property within this L C D R final planned area development, consisting of approximately 636.73 acres, generally located south of Lower Buckeye Road and east of Citrus Road by consolidating stipulations of approval from previous rezonings, and by adopting the L C D R final pad dated June 2018, which modifies the rear and side yard setbacks and the maximum lot coverage development standards for the L D R 1, L D R 2, and L D R 3, low-density residential land use categories. Amending the zoning map of the City of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to adopt ordinance 2018-1408? I hear a motion? Some move?
Second.
I heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, and a second from Councilmember Stip, open for council discussion.
I would like to say one thing, I mean, I wanna thank staff for working so diligently with them, and thank you, Karen, and all of the folks involved in it, 'cause I know it's been a long relationship, but we do appreciate it.
Well, it's just nice to know a long relationship lasted.
Yes.
All right. It's come to its final, so with a pleasant, with a pleasant look on my face, let's have a roll call vote for this one, huh?
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Keno?
Aye.
Councilmember Pazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, we're on to 7.3 on business, is a public hearing to consider rezoning approximately 30 acres from the agriculture zoning district to the Pebble Creek Marketplace mixed-use pad, excuse me, mixed-use phase-two pad. Public hearing open? Hello, Alex Latinsky, our planner two is presenting.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. Their request tonight, as you mentioned, is the rezone for approximately 30 acres from agricultural to the planned area development, to create the Pebble Creek Marketplace mixed-use phase-two final P A D. The property is located at the southeast corner of McDowell Road and 159th Avenue. To the north is the Palm Valley Phase 8 P A D, and within the Palm Valley P A D, we have the Lux Apartments, which is now called the Max 159. To the east, we have the existing Pebble Creek Marketplace P A D, which is zoned for general commercial uses. This is the future Windco site, and along Pebble Creek is the future Circle K and Panera locations that you've recently moved forward approving. To the south is Interstate 10, and the carved-out portion in the middle is a dot property for retention. To the east is currently vacant land zone for commercial uses, that's also within the Palm Valley Phase 8 P A D. The request is to include approximately 17 acres of multifamily and 16, excuse me, 13 acres of general commercial property. Within the general plan, the property is designated as business and commerce, and is located within the transit-oriented development overlay. That overlay encourages higher intensity and density residential uses, as well as emphasizes pedestrian-oriented development. Additionally, high-density residential developments are encouraged within mixed-use developments and adjacent to commercial centers. So in this proposal, we see that the commercial center is kind of wrapping a little bit that multifamily portion. These are the development standards included in the P A D, so for the area designated commercial, the city's C2 general commercial standards will strictly apply. One of the main reasons for the need for P A D zoning was to deviate from the city's multifamily standards. So on the right, we see the comparison of the city's M F 24 standards and the proposed standards. So for maximum building height, it's set at 45 feet, which is a five-foot increase of what's permitted. The rear yard setback, which is currently set at 20% of the lot depth, is proposed to be 35 feet. The street side, which is typically 30 feet, is also proposed for 25 feet. As I mentioned, the general plan designates the property as transit-oriented development, and like I said, includes, or allows for increased densities and intensities, which includes varied heights and setbacks. Therefore, we find the P A D request is meeting the requirements of the general plan and is a valid request. A stipulation of approval is recommended to set the minimum number of dwelling units at 204. This is intentional to maintain higher density, to further those general plan standards. That way, if the developer sells the property, that high density remains. Article 9 of the zoning ordinance establishes a freeway development overlay, which requires residential development within 500 feet of I-10 and Loop 303 to submit sound attenuation plans. The overlay requires that the exterior noise levels on the subject property not exceed 64 decibels. The applicant did submit the plan, which includes recommendations and requirements that ensure the 64-decibel requirement is being met. The plan was reviewed and approved by the engineering department, so a stipulation has been included to comply with those recommendations for sound, for noise mitigation. This is the conceptual site plan included in the project narrative. So on the west side, we can see the commercial property that connects to the Windco property further west, and then on the, in the center of the property, you can see, center of the image, you can see the multifamily proposal. A neighborhood meeting was held on June 6th, the applicant and staff were available for questions, however, no one attended this meeting. The applicant did receive one general inquiry about the project, but not any opposition. To date, staff has also not received any opposition to the request. The public hearing was held before the Planning and Zoning Commission on September 12th. Once again, there was no one from the public in opposition of the request. In the staff report, staff finds rezoning compliant with the city's standards and recommends approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission also unanimously recommended approval on September 12th. This concludes my presentation, the applicant is here and does have a presentation available for you as well, but I can answer any questions if you'd like. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
Just for the applicant.
Advocate?
Adam Baugh.
Good afternoon, Adam Baugh, 2525 East Arizona Biltmore Circle. It's rare I get to present on crutches, but I had to promise my right knee to get that unanimous planning commission approval a couple weeks ago, so I'm hopeful that you don't require my left knee, or else I'm gonna have to have Alex carry me out of here. I'm very grateful to be presenting in front of you today, and this is a great opportunity to joint venture between P B Bell and Howard Grace. Howard Grace has owned this property for 10 to 12 years, so he's really thrilled to see something finally happen here. Howard Grace also owns the vacant land directly east of it, which is right there at the arterial intersection, so he owns a lot of what is, I think, otherwise, commercial inventory area, but had a hard time getting some livable opportunities on here. So I'd love to just walk you through, I'll be brief, 'cause I think we had a great presentation from staff and a strong support from the planning commission, but I think I have a couple of slides that will help explain this a little bit. This property's zoned agricultural, though clearly no one ever expects it to be agricultural urban long-term, and given that it's next to a freeway, I think it's more likely to be a couple of things, apartments, office, or commercial. And so one thing we've noticed is today's commercial is totally different than commercial eight years ago or 10 years ago. We used to love to put four corners of commercial at every major arterial intersection and maximize our sales tax revenues. That's proven to sort of be foolhardy in today's economy with online shopping, free shipping, you can even try it on and return it back for free, and it's really hard for brick-and-mortar stores to compete with that online economy. And so when you have four commercials, of four corners of commercial in 2003, looking forward to 2018, it's just not the same environment, and in this case, we do have that happening here, and so Mr. Grace owns the commercial property directly east of us, that's Pebble Creek Marketplace Phase 1. It's been a long time, but we got a Windco coming in and a Panera, but it's gonna be some time before that fills out the rest. The other challenge with this site, though, is it's not at the major arterial, it's sort of mid-block, and it's hard to make mid-block succeed at the arterial, even more difficult further down the road, and so those are the considerations that came into play. The good thing here is he hasn't given up on it, he's had a chance to sort of cut the property in half with a blend of commercial and residential, but what he's trying to accomplish is inject new residential that can immediately be customers in his commercial development, and that's sort of the proposal for you today. She highlighted it, but this is consistent to general plan, because the business, commerce, and T A D overlay do allow high-density residential as part of this transit corridor areas. So here's the plan, and here's the plan directly east of us, and this is the Phase 1, and so we sort of wanna play on that and bridge Phase 1 to the residential, and so what we've done is, we provided a commercial component on the east side, and a couple of things I wanna highlight here, we don't have any direct access onto McDowell Road, there's a 126-foot building setback, and there's the canal right there, so we didn't create any new curb cuts, which I think is good. We're trying to use the existing curb cuts and transportation streets as they are to prevent cars backing up, turning in. But if you can see, on the right-hand side, the top, let's see, I guess it's my right-hand side, the top corner, there's already existing curb cut there for the commercial. We decided to provide a access point directly from our eastern end into the commercial, so there can create pedestrian and vehicular activity. So next to that driveway entrance is a walking path, it's a little hard to see, but it's a detached sidewalk with shade trees on both sides, and so we wanna encourage that pedestrian movement from the residential into the commercial. We also observed the existing driveway, excuse me, road on our western boundary, this is a gated community, and has full security, but because we have a big setback along the northern side, it creates a great streetscape view, but it squeezes the property, so we have a little bit of a deviation on our south side. I wanna point out that on the south side, our garage units, not your typical multifamily units, and so that helps buffer the noise, and as part of that sound study, we have found some noise attenuation measures that we're gonna incorporate, things like triple pane windows, a higher-rated insulation, double drywall, and then in between each of those little garage units on the southern boundary, we have an eight-foot solid wall as well. So we've incorporated that feedback that came from a CivTech consulting group. At the end of the day, P B Bell's always designed a product unique for its own context, they've never done two products the same, and they've taken some cues here in this area, and so what they've, go over here, is here's some kind of amenities, that they, this is not just Google image stock photos, these are samples from their own projects and communities they've built here in Arizona. The elevations you've seen in your packet, but they create more of an urban feel, which when you're in a corridor like this, next to retail, next to freeway, you wanna kind of create that corridor. So I wanna ask a question at the planning commission, why not residential single-family here? And I think that's sort of self-evident, but I'll answer it. It's probably not the most appropriate thing next to freeway, but apartments are highly appropriate, and more importantly, they're very appropriate next to commercial opportunities. We think it's a luxury to have a retail center next door to us, we think it's a luxury to plan them together and provide that cross-axis that you normally don't see when there's separate owners. In this case, the J V presents a wonderful opportunity. I'm grateful for staff's help, they've helped us and guided us through this process, we're grateful that we haven't had any neighbor opposition, and I'll be grateful if I can get out here with my left knee and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, that was a great presentation. All right, I'm gonna close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution 2018-1891 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1891, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk, titled Official Supplementary Zoning Map 18-04A, Pebble Creek Marketplace Mixed Use Phase 2 Parent Parcel Legal Description, and Pebble Creek Marketplace Mixed Use Phase 2 Pad Development Regulations dated June 25, 2018.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve the Resolution 2018-1891?
So moved.
Second. I heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Councilmember Laura Tonno, open for council discussion. Councilman Stip?
Great project, and I think we're excited to, I'd say, finally get into business with Mr. Grace. He's owned a lot of land, but we haven't seen anything come out of it, and I think we're excited about what that future looks like, so, at least I am, I shouldn't speak for everybody, but I'm excited about that. As far as the location of the multifamily, I think it makes a lot of sense. I had the opportunity last week to sit with Development Investment Group, and they were talking about just this very thing, that multifamily is really the wave of where residential is going, that... That buyers today aren't necessarily looking at single-family homes anymore or those types of neighborhoods, they're looking at collective mini-communities that you find in, in, in this sort of development. And this is the kind of thing that I'm, that I'm excited about in my, in my lifetime change as well. So great project, looking forward to it. If this, hopefully this helps spur the eastern development, but it, it's a, it's a good project, and I appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, Bill. Councilman Laura Tonno?
I, I want to thank staff, and I want to thank you for bringing the presentation. We're not gonna take your other knee. It, it looks really good, and I, I, I think this is gonna help bring the, the density that we need in that corridor. It's a great-looking project, and the idea that you'll be able to walk for coffee to Panera once it, once that gets done and, and moved over and walk and get your groceries, I think it will really add a lot of walking and non-car needs for a lot of our residents. So I'm excited to see the project, and I'm excited to see it start going vertical, so.
Anybody else? Councilor Hampton?
Yeah, yeah, so originally I was looking at it, though, thank you so much for the presentation. Start with that first. But yeah, I wasn't sure what I was gonna think of it originally, but then I started looking more into it, the, I mean, the sound. I appreciate the, the sound, the wall, the, the glass, the different things in that area, 'cause I'm, I was afraid the residents wouldn't, I mean, they would get there, wouldn't like it for some reason. But, but yeah, I think it's a good, I think it's a good project, especially with the combination of the commercial that comes with the, with the apartment here. So I think it'd be good walkable, high-density product that, that residents, they should, they should want. So, so yeah, so I appreciate it. And like Bill said, I'm looking forward to working with the landowner in the future here, too, and trying to activate some more of that commercial area. And yeah, get some more uses and some more things for our residents to, to want to shop at, so, thank you.
Councilor Pizzillo?
Yeah, I think this project's gonna be a success, though. Just, just one general comment. I know this is just a rendition of the drawing, but from my perspective, when you have large buildings that are multiplexed like that, I personally like a diversification somewhat in the facade, different color mixes, maybe a little break with some front faux brick on it, something to break it up so it doesn't look all the same, you know, throughout the whole thing. It's just, it's just my thing, because we're in the forever business, and whatever it looks like is gonna stay there forever. So just a thought as you go through putting the final pieces together. But I, but I think this is gonna be a major success. Thanks.
Councilman Kano?
I really like the mixed-use idea. I think that's kind of that creative thing I've been hoping for and looking for, and certainly PB Bell has demonstrated is a, is a fine product. The thing that concerns me is the proximity to the freeway. And I understand on the west side of the property, there is an automotive and related commercial overlay, which maybe someone could explain what all that is, but it sounds like it will be commercial property on both sides of the project.
Thank you, Alex.
Mayor, Councilor Kano, thank you for your question. The property to the west is zoned for commercial uses. The, I think recently, I didn't work on the project. It was either a rezone or a use permit allowing for the automated, automotive-related commercial. I don't know the status of that project right now. Once again, I'm not working on that, but that, it would be surrounded by both.
Okay, so I understood from the documents provided that sound mitigation is not only on the backside for the freeway, but also on the side, perhaps anticipating what might come in the future. So I'd like to know a little bit more also about where the sound wall is going to be. Thank you. Oops. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor.
Thank you, Rebecca.
And Council. Yes, so what I'm gonna point to is right here. This is the eight-foot wall that goes around here, and then it turns into a six-foot wall for this segment of it. So over here, where you were referring to the commercial piece, this is gonna be an eight-foot wall along that western edge. Okay, because, okay, so the proximity to the freeway. I know that there have been single-family homes, but this is high-density, and I am concerned because it appears to be very close. And thank you very much, and I appreciate your question. Again, I would like to say that they did perform the noise attenuation plan, which is per FHWA and ADOT. FHWA requirements are for seventy decibels. ADOT is sixty-seven, and the city of Goodyear has sixty-four. So we even have a higher criteria. When they did the study, they project for fifteen years out into the future. So they take a measurement today, they look at fifteen years from now. They use a level of Service C, which is constant-flowing traffic at seventy miles per hour. They use a sixty-eight degrees and fifty percent humidity. All of that makes it the worst-case scenario. They were able to do that and add in the, the wall and then the other building components, and with that, they met the noise attenuation plan for the city of Goodyear.
May I add one more thing on that? Councilor Kano, the other thing I want to point out, though, is the, while we have a thirty-five-foot setback, it's actually about a hundred feet setback from the freeway. The other thing I want to highlight, though, is those units on the back are garage units, so there's only actually ten units that are on that, that south side. Most of those are garage units, and they intend to serve as a buffer for the, the larger project and the residential units for the back. I think those ones, the two, the three stories behind are a hundred and thirty, forty feet setback from our property line. So that would probably be almost two hundred feet from the freeway at that point.
Okay, that, that helps to explain a little bit. You know, the thing about the noise mitigation is that it presumes that people will, every day, have their windows shut and, and, you know, because of the weather permitting and things like that. And also, that proximity to the freeway, there's other aspects of it. In addition to noise, it's air quality and such that the wall would not necessarily mitigate. So I, I love the idea. I, I am just very concerned about having it back up directly onto the freeway.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other comments? All right, and we're gonna have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Nay.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
All right, great. Will the city clerk please read ordinance twenty-eighteen dash fourteen zero three by title only, please?
Adopt ordinance Number twenty-eighteen dash fourteen zero three, rezoning approximately thirty acres of land located at the southwest corner of McDowell Road and Hundred and Fifty-Ninth Avenue from agricultural AG to final planned area development, PAD, Pebble Creek Marketplace Mixed Use Phase Two PAD, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement corrections and severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve ordinance twenty-eighteen dash fourteen zero three? Do I hear the motion? So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. No discussion. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Next item, seven point four on business, is a public hearing to consider the rezoning approximately forty-five acres, generally located at the southeast corner of Citrus Road and Campbell Avenue from the planned area development to a single-family residential, R-one-six. Open the public hearing. There you are again, Alex. Doing a good job tonight. Go ahead.
This next item, the subject property, as you mentioned, located Citrus and Campbell Avenue, which is the Sadea entrance off Citrus. You might recall that last month, the council reviewed the rezoning for the surrounding property called Abel Ranch. And to the, so that, to the north and the south, northeast and south, we have that Abel Ranch R-one-six zoning and the bit of agricultural urban. And then to the west, as I mentioned, is Sadea. So you'd recall, once again, the property was zoned planned area development under the Talavertia Estates PAD, allowing for residential development with lot sizes a hundred and ten feet by a hundred and forty feet. The red area is approximately where the subject property sits. This request is to rezone that portion from PAD to R-one-six, like we did with the Abel Ranch property. The conceptual development plan on the screen is the, what the applicant provided and a comparison. Sorry, I got my slides confused. So in the original plan, there was approximately seventy lots planned, bringing the density to about one-point-five-nine dwelling units per acre, and with the maximum number of lots set at a hundred and ten, the Citrus Farms portion would have a density of two-point-four-three dwelling units per acre. So just like the Abel Ranch project, the property is located within the Luke Air Force Base noise contour and includes density restrictions. Therefore, we once again have included a stipulation restricting the number of units to a hundred and ten to cap that density at two-point-four-three. This was reviewed and accepted by Luke Air Force Base, and that letter was included in your packets. So combined with the Abel Ranch property, the overall density of the area within the noise contour is two-point-one-three dwelling units per acre. And all the development standards on the property will apply to the city's R-one-six standards. On August ninth, staff held a neighborhood meeting to discuss the project with the public. No one from the public attended this meeting, nor has staff received any questions or additional inquiries. On September twelfth, the Planning and Zoning Commission heard the item as well. No one from the public spoke regarding the item. To conclude, the applicant has demonstrated compliance with all required codes and ordinances, and staff recommends approval. The Planning and Zoning Commission also recommends approval, recommended approval on September twelfth unanimously. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is available for questions or presentation if you would like, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Does the applicant want to speak? Please come forward.
Hillary Turby, on behalf of the applicant. I think Alex did a great job of going over the basic details of our plan, but I'd like to make myself available for questions if you have any.
Great, thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing. Will the city clerk please read Resolution twenty-eighteen dash eighteen ninety-three by title only?
Adopt Resolution Number twenty-eighteen dash eighteen ninety-three, declaring as public records those certain documents filed with the city clerk titled Official Supplementary Zoning Map Number eighteen dash zero seven and zoning exhibit Zone R-one-six Legal Description.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to approve Resolution twenty-eighteen dash eighteen ninety-three? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Councilman Hampton, a second by?
Second?
No. Second by Kano? No, it's Kano, okay. Open for council discussion. Here's Councilman Laura Tonno.
I, I have one quick question. I think it's a great project, and it'll blend in really well in that area, but I just wanted to know, and I don't know if I just can't see it, or if I'm, my eyes are going here. The Paseo that runs through the project, between the ninety-nine lots and the thirty and forty lots there, it's on, eight of eight of the staff's presentation. Does that connect into the other developments? Because there's a black line, but then it looks like it connects.
Mayor and council members, there are vehicular and pedestrian connections to Abel Ranch. So it is planned as an integral portion of Abel Ranch, and it was designed to create those connections throughout the community.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Sorry, Mayor had her phone on. I can't seem to make it stop.
Who's calling you on a Monday night?
All right, so where are we here? Sorry about that. I really apologize. So we're ready for a roll call vote.
Did anybody else on the council want to speak?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry, what?
I just wanted to verify, nobody else on the coun- council had any other questions?
No.
Nope, okay. I'm sorry.
Call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please read ordinance twenty-eighteen dash fourteen zero five by title only?
Adopt ordinance Number twenty-eighteen dash fourteen zero five, conditionally rezoning approximately forty-five acres located at the southeast corner of Citrus Road and Campbell Avenue, known as Citrus Farms, by rezoning approximately forty-five acres from final planned area development, PAD, to R-one-six, single-family detached residential zoning, amending the zoning map of the city of Goodyear, providing for non-abridgement, providing for corrections, providing for severability, providing for an effective date, and providing for penalties.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, a second, to adopt ordinance twenty-eighteen dash fourteen oh five? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Vice Mayor Campbell and a second by Councilman Stip. Open for council discussion. Any discussion? All right, let's do a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Laura Tonno?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Next item is seven point five on business, to approve a request of the preliminary plat for Palm Gate, subject to stipulation. We have Alex back again.
Two more, Mayor, thank you. This item is the preliminary plat for Palm Gate RV and self-storage. The property is located west of Litchfield Road, north of Van Buren, and just west of the now Goodwill site, the old Fry's site. It's just south of Towns, Town Place Suites, and then just to the northwest is cancer treatment centers. The preliminary plat proposes five lots, five lots in one tract. Lot five is where the storage facility sits, and then four parcels will be created along the entry. And tract A is back here. That is an existing drainage basin for all of the property. In yellow, the cross-access, that's granted throughout the site. That's what's highlighted. The preliminary plat has met all the city's zoning and engineering standards, and staff is recommending approval. The Planning and, Planning and Zoning Commission also recommended approval of the item on August eighth. That concludes my presentation. I can answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, could I have a motion, a second, to approve the preliminary plat? Hear the motion?
So moved.
Second.
Heard a motion from Councilman Hampton and a second from Council Pizzillo. Open council discussion? Yes, Councilman Hampton?
Is, is that property all owned by the same person that has the self-storage area? Or is it a totally different user?
Currently, the property is owned by the same property owner.
It's a unique, it's a unique property layout, so. And they plan on a potential road or connectivity from the north there to the south, or is that possible?
Are you talking about up here?
Yeah, from there to the, around the, the shopping center or down to these lots here?
Thank you. The only access provided to the property is off Van Buren, so along the southern portion. This is all drainage.
Okay.
So there's no vehicular access. But then they'll share, they're, they will share these driveways at the front.
Okay, so really, there's nothing that's gonna happen up, up north there, except drainage, okay. All right, that's some of my questions. Thank you.
Thanks.
Councilmember Stip?
Is the applicant here tonight?
I do not believe he's here.
That's too bad. This is, this will be a great enhancement to the property and, and help us along Van Buren. I was actually surprised that it wasn't done when they first, when they first bought the property. So it's a great project. Thanks for bringing it.
Good comments. I agree with you. Councilman, Vice Mayor?
I was just going to say, I'm excited that they're going to subdivide the parcel to get rid of the dirt, and it'll look great. And then it'll also have a nice entry into their, where their facility is, so.
Sure, some of the other businesses down the road will like this.
Yeah, so I'm excited. That'll be great.
All right, I think we're all excited, so let's vote on this. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it. Next on business is seven point six, to, is to approve the request for the preliminary plat for the Australia parcel nine point thirty-one, subject to stipulations. Alex, you're on.
Thank you, Mayor. This last parcel's from, this last request is from Newland for parcel nine point three-one in the Montecito community. So to the north, we have parcel five and parcel nine point five and nine point six, which is the Terrada and Montecito Village neighborhoods. To the south is Mountain Vista Drive. And this is- And this zoning exhibit, you saw that earlier this year, this parcel is designated for the SFD 50, and then, which matches the zoning to the east and to the south. This site was formerly the additional school site, but with the rezone, Newland requested to convert it. The, there was a restriction placed on it in agreement with the neighboring parcel, existing parcel, that there would be a height restriction, a single-story height restriction, which is that little star on there. So that restriction has been carried over into this preliminary plat. The parcel includes 42 single-family lots with five tracks. It includes two main entry points, one off of Mountain Vista Drive, so that's the main entry here, and then one off 182nd Drive. Tract A serves as the main open space tract. The typical lot size in this parcel is 65 feet by 125 feet. This main entry off of Mountain Vista Drive will also eventually serve the main drive to the future park with parking spaces to the west. On the bottom here, you can see the current phasing, or current and proposed phasing of Mountain Vista Drive. So today, it exists to this point. With the development of parcel 9.31, it will be developed to this point, which is the edge of 184th Drive. The preliminary plat was reviewed against the city's requirements and found to be acceptable. Therefore, staff is recommending approval with a subject to the stipulations in the staff report. The Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of five to zero on September 12th as well. This concludes my presentation, and the applicant is here available for questions, too.
Thank you, Alex. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then there's, I'd like a motion in a second to approve the preliminary, preliminary plat. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilmember Hampton, and a second by Councilman Stip, open for council discussion? No discussion, all in favor say aye? Aye. Ayes have it. Let's go to 7.7 on business, to adopt a resolution to approve the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for the West Goodyear Sewer and Water Infrastructure, and approve an amendment to the escrow agreement. Rebecca Zook, Engineering Director, presenting. Hello, Rebecca.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I am here this evening to request approval of the First Amendment of the West Goodyear Development, Water and Sewer Infrastructure Agreement and Escrow Agreement. The request is for extending from 18 months to 24 months, so an additional six months for the construction of the water and sewer lines. At this time, they, I can give you a little history on this particular construction. They started approximately a year ago to construct the three and a half miles of line, and they are approximately 90% through with the sewer construction and 40% through with the waterline construction. At this point, I can tell you that none of the lines have been accepted into the city's system. They wouldn't do that until we were completely 100% accepting of the lines and had gone through the closeout process. Over the past six months, we have been working very closely with them, along with the Public Works Department, and we've had a few construction issues. Because of that, we are asking, and they are asking for the six-month extension in order to continue those coordination efforts to resolve the issues that we're finding in the field, and then also to wrap up the construction of the lines until they, and we wouldn't do that until we were, they were successful in the construction, and we accepted those into the city of Goodyear system. With that, I would like to reiterate that I'm here this evening to request the extension for six months of the Development Agreement and Escrow Agreement for the construction of the water and sewer lines for West Goodyear. And with that, I'll take any questions you have.
Thank you, Rebecca. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, will the city clerk please read Resolution 2018-1905 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution Number 2018-1905, approving the First Amendment to the Development Agreement for West Goodyear Sewer and Water Infrastructure and the First Amendment to the Escrow Agreement, authorizing the execution of the amendments and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Can I have a motion a second to adopt Resolution 2018-1905? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Vice Mayor Campbell, open council discussion? Councilman Stip?
Six months enough time?
Six months is what they're recommending, and then we're in concurrence with that, absolutely. Again, we have, the vast majority is in the ground, we just need to wrap up the final pieces of it.
I'd just hate to limit it if you go, oh, it's seven and a half months. So I just want to make sure that six was enough, so we aren't going through this process again. It's good to finally see the project moving along and progressing. Unforeseen circumstances bring us to this point, but I just want to make sure we're not back again, so thanks.
Any other discussion? All right, let's have roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Kano?
Aye.
Councilmember Pizzillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries.
Next item, 7.8 on business, is to approve a budget transfer in the amount of $75,000 from the Capital Projects Contingency Reserve for the Capital Improvement Program, Project Cost and Estimating Services. Rebecca, Rebecca Zook, once more.
Hello again. At this point, I am requesting a budget transfer of $75,000 from the CIP Contingency Reserve Fund for cost estimating services. I'd like to give a little bit of explanation regarding cost estimating in general. It really is art and a science, and the science pieces relate to the details of the plans, where they are in the status, is it an initial scope, is it a detailed construction drawings? It also relates to the accuracy of the survey and the type of information that has been identified related to utilities in the area that need to be relocated, and also the material quantity takeoffs that come from those detailed plans. Those science pieces, we're very good at with the CIP group. The art of estimating is in the judgment side of things, and that's a little more difficult to quantify. With that, those are things like the market conditions, the labor and material availability. We've seen a shortage across the city with labor, both in development and capital projects. Also, the economic conditions with fluctuating and or increasing prices and the volatility of that, and knowing when that's happening and why. Finally, there's project conditions. It could be related to the size of the project, whether it's large or small, that could, that could have a play into it. And then site constraints. As an example, we've had some projects that have RID relocation, and that's very time-sensitive because it can only be done one time a year, and so that could potentially add cost to a project because of mobilization. But as a result of these potential variations, we are seeing significant differences with several of our projects. Our request is for Mortenson Construction to assist us with projects that are located within our FY19 and 23 CIP. For example, we would like for them to help us with the Recreation Campus 30-acre park estimation, Fire Station 186, and the Police Building Phase 2. It is important to note that when we bring on someone like Mortenson, it's not only important for them to share their expertise with us and show us how to do it, but also teach us so that in the future, we can become better at estimating our projects and making sure that we're looking at both the art and the science of estimating. With that, I request the approval of the budget transfer of $75,000 for cost estimating services. And with that, I can answer any questions.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
All right, does anyone in the audience want to speak? Then is there, I'd like a motion a second to approve the budget transfer. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilman Stip, and a second by Councilman Kano, open for council discussion? Councilman Hampton?
How, how long is the services for, you said?
It does not have a date limit. What it is, is it's a, essentially not to exceed $75,000. Right now, the estimate that was put together provides for 13 different projects to be estimated with them, and they have a level one, two, and three, again, depending on the detail that we're asking for. So it essentially is a number of hours, and that number of hours is based on whether it's just an initial scope of a project or a detailed construction estimate. And then on top of that, we have an additional $25,000. So the 13 projects is covered with the $50,000, and then $25,000 that is for additional projects we may want as we go forward. So not to exceed, no time limit. But again, it's for those projects that we're looking at right now, the FY19 to 23, so it'll be, I'd love to start tomorrow.
Thank you.
Councilman Stip?
I have a financial question on this end, and I obviously, I should apologize, I didn't get it to anybody over the weekend, obviously out of town, but we're taking this from the CIP contingency fund, which had a set dollar amount, and every time we withdraw from that, that contingency amount continues to go down. I don't know who I should be looking at to answer this question, but is that correct?
That is correct.
So this is an unexpected contingency, and I understand the rationale behind targeting that, but from a financial perspective, since the manager's contingency rolls over every year to 500,000, doesn't it make sense for us to leave the contingency for CIP, with CIP, and use this management issue on the other side? I don't want to tell staff or ask the, so I'm kind of asking that overall question. It makes more sense for us to draw from one contingency fund from, as opposed to another. So maybe there's a rationale behind that, Doug standing right behind us.
Both contingency funds would be eligible for use of this. We chose the Capital Project Contingency Fund because that's related directly to the CIP, and the only reason we're doing this is for the CIP.
And I understand that, and I think we put the CIP contingency in place for, you know, obviously, these kinds of issues, but it, since this is more of the management of the CIP or the estimation of the CIP, that's also a management function, and I guess it's probably six to one, half dozen to another. I just hate to have us keep hitting that contingency fund for these management issues that I think we intended for that money to be used more for shovels and dirt and concrete and that kind of stuff, so. You know, it's not going to make a difference on my vote tonight, but I, I think maybe holistically, maybe there's an education piece we need, I don't know, but thanks for explaining it.
And one other piece to it is both the manager's contingency, as well as the Capital Projects contingency we're looking at right here, are both one-time general funds, so at the end of the day, it comes from the same funding source as well.
That's kind of what I thought, but it may be a semantic sense what I said. Thanks for the answer, Doug, I appreciate it.
Any other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor?
Rebecca, I'm assuming that none of our PMs are able to do this, and this is why we're going out for contract services.
That, that is correct, Vice Mayor, and again, I would go back to the art and science. They're able to do the science side of things, but with the volatility of the market that we're seeing right now and have been seeing for probably about the last year, that's something that we can't do, and Mortenson Contracting has a specific cost estimating division.
Okay. I would think that's advantageous for the city. I think we're going to get better estimates, and it's the time that it takes, and there are so many projects out there. You heard Economic Development speak before us, we see all of our, our CIP that we want to do for the city, and good on you that you stretched it to come forth and ask for this, because I think it's well worth it. All right, council, all in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the ayes have it, thank you. The last item on business is approve the expenditure for design services for the Recreation Campus off-site improvements and approve related budget transfer. Nathan Torres, Parks and Recreation Director, and Walter Kinsler, Capital Improvement Program Manager, presenting.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Tonight, we are here to ask for your consideration of approving an expenditure for design services for the Recreation Campus and associated infrastructure improvements. As you're aware, the master plan, the master plan for the Recreation Campus was adopted by City Council in May of this past year. The adoption of this plan culminated nearly 10 months of planning with extensive community and stakeholder outreach, and all more than 1,100 individuals were engaged, and through that engagement, the basis for design that's being presented this evening was developed. The Recreation Campus design will include a 30-acre community park, recreation and aquatics facility, and related infrastructure improvements. Design elements for the community park include design elements for the community park, which is 30 acres, include two rectangular multipurpose fields that will also serve as a great lawn for events. We have a plaza area and gathering space, we have public art, plenty of paths and trails, two diamond ball fields for youth and adult softball, as well as youth baseball. We have sport courts, pickleball, tennis, volleyball, basketball. We have a large group picnic roomada, as well as tot lots. So we're pretty proud of the master plan and the intent of the design for the community park, and this truly will be a gathering place for the community. In terms of the Recreation Center, the design will include two levels totaling 40, over 48,000 square feet of programmable indoor space. The Recreation Center will feature, or actually, the first level will feature a multi-use gymnasium, which is here. And again, multi-use is really going to be the theme for the entire facility, so there's really a large effort being placed to make sure that we can design the space so it's as flexible as possible. And here, you see some of the uses that may take place inside the multi-use gym. We will also have three different multipurpose rooms, two that are 1,000 square feet each, and a larger one that is 2,000 square feet. And again, the theme for these rooms is multi-use, multipurpose. One hour, it could be a bongo, the next hour, it could be, you know, toddler time, or tumbling, or aerobics, as well as summer programming. And then in the evening, the larger room, maybe it's a reception of some sort, or a meeting space. With our last feedback that we received from, from council in late May, there was a request to look at options for teens, and so we're happy to report that we built in a teen breakout area, which is off the lobby, and this area here will serve as a breakout area for teens that could feature, you know, some table games and some gaming areas. It's important to note that this area is before you pass the control point going into the recreation facility, so teens would be welcome to come in and utilize that anytime without needing any type of pass or anything like that. So we're pretty excited about to bring that concept forward. The second level, which is totaling about 16, over 16,000 square feet, will feature a, an extended walking track, jogging track, which 10 times around will give you a mile, so that kind of gives you an idea of how large this is. Typically, walking tracks extend over the gymnasium only. What we're proposing here and the concept for the design will basically be the warning, or the walking track would extend around the gymnasium all the way to almost the front of the facility, and then back around. And so you can see, this is the second level, and it would exist over the, almost the entire first floor. Some of the activities that that would allow us to accommodate, of course, the walking and jogging track, but then also weighted very heavily, and hearing from council feedback as well, an area for some small fitness component that we would be able to provide to our residents as well. So the total design would be 48, over 48,000 square feet. In terms of the aquatics facility, the design will include an eight-lap swimming pool, that's 25 yards, and that will take us to high school-level competition. We decided that it wasn't appropriate to do a full 50-meter pool, which is Olympic size. That area is being served by our local YMCA, who we partner with, and so they really feel that need for more competitive swim. So it will, the design will include an eight-lap pool, it will feature a family fun splash leisure pool, and And I'll get back to that, but lazy river as well as slides, and then plenty of shade. When we talk about the leisure family fun play pool, it will have splash features, but it will also have a zero-depth entry. And why is this important? The zero-depth entry makes the facility available for people with limited mobility. So those with chairs or those that aren't as mobile can access the body of water and pool of water very easily. And so if I can have Almo, please, I'll show you what that might look like. Might be a little tough to see here, but you can see the water basically is, the beginning of the pool is basically flush to the ground. And so it allows all users gracious accommodation. And so if you do happen to be, have some limited mobility, it will provide opportunities for you to still enjoy the amenities within this leisure pool area. And we want to make sure that the facility has something for everyone of all ages and abilities. If I can have the presentation back? And with that, Walt will talk about the infrastructure improvements that are being included in design as well.
Thank you, Nathan. Good evening, Mayor, City Council members. My name is Walt Kinsler. I'm CIP manager for the Engineering Department, City of Goodyear. I'd like to highlight the infrastructure components, and then we'll talk about the next steps. As part of the infrastructure components, we have two road improvements and existing Roosevelt Irrigation District facilities that are going to be relocated. Along Harrison, we'll do half-street improvements from 158th Street to the east, Australia Parkway. We'll reconfigure the existing median, excuse me, at Australia Parkway. The half-street improvements will include sidewalk, curb, gutter, asphalt. That'll be one lane eastbound, one lane westbound, and we'll have some center lane for left turns. We'll also include street lighting, and we'll have into our north parking lot, stacking capacity here to eliminate any congestion at the intersection. And that intersection at Australia and Harrison will be signalized. Along Australia Parkway, we're going to have a one lane south that'll continue down to Goodyear Boulevard. It will include right-turn lane into the east parking lot, as well as a right-turn lane at Goodyear Boulevard. The RID infrastructure relocations will include an easement along Harrison, an RID easement along Harrison that'll take us to Australia Parkway, and then along the west side of Australia Parkway down where it will tie into an existing RID facility at the southeast corner of Goodyear and southeast corner of the Park Project, northwest corner of Australia To go through the next steps, excuse me, tonight with council approval, we'll begin our design process. That design development will create detailed construction documents for our construction manager at risk to competitively bid and provide a guaranteed maximum price to the city. That process should take approximately 12 months. We will be looking at ways to, strategies for reducing costs, and as well as we will be periodically coming back to council and letting the public know the status of the project as we move through that 12-month design process. And then construction to begin fall of 2019, approximately a 12-month construction process. And then the campus, initial phase of development, open to the public fall of 2020. Thank you.
Thank you. It's exciting.
Thank you. And Mayor and council, with that, we ask that you consider approving an expenditure in the amount of $2,365,335 for the development of construction drawings for the recreation campus, as well as related budget transfers associated with that.
Thank you, Nathan. Are there any speaker parents?
No, Mayor.
All right. Could I have a motion a second to approve? Hear a motion?
Some move.
Second.
Heard a motion from Vice Mayor Campbell, the second of Councilman Lortano. Open for council discussion. Vice Mayor.
Well, we're excited, Nathan. And I will tell you, personally, I want it built as big as we can afford, because when it's done, it's going to be too small, because everyone's going to come, especially when they realize we're going to have an indoor walking track. And I bet I see Walt with me up there, because it's too hot to walk in the summer. But it's exciting. Our residents are excited, and I have been speaking to various service clubs throughout the valley to garner excitement and enthusiasm for our park. And the feedback to me is that we may have a wonderful opportunity to partner with several different organizations who want to see the ADA component of the park enlarged or enhanced. So once we know where we're going, and I keep pitching this because it's so important that we have community buy-in for this project, and any funds that we can get will help us provide that much more. And so I'm excited to keep working on it, and I can't wait till 2020.
Sounds like a TV commercial, doesn't it? Councilor Lortano.
I am very excited. Thank you both. Thank you, Nathan. This is wonderful. I wish it could be built quicker, but I know it's a really large project, and I think that's important that our citizens understand that, too. This is not just one building. This is, this is a whole campus, and it's a giant park. It's a water park. It's a regular park. It's the rec center. So this is a huge project for the city to take on, and I appreciate all the hard work that you and your staff and everyone have done. You've included everyone, from the smallest kids to people who may have disabilities, to families, to people who want to exercise, to the teens. So thank you for remembering the teens. I know we all talked about that. That's one thing that gets commented a lot, is we don't have a lot of places for teens to go here, and you're giving them a spot to hang out safely, so they're not just walking around and hanging out at the local McDonald's. So I appreciate it, and I look forward to the updates. And I will be passing this presentation along to everyone to let them know what great job the city is doing for this. And I know this is going to take all of our departments working together, so thank you.
Councilwoman Pizzolo.
You know, we've been talking about getting a nice central park for those, you know, within our community, because we have the one off of Litchfield won't be like this. But still, the point is, I'm really excited to get this park in. We've been talking about this for years and can't wait to the dedication, so keep the good work going.
Councilwoman Stiff.
You know, Nathan, you guys have done an amazing job. And we sat down, I think it was a year ago, when we did the first focus groups and really talked about how this is. But if we're, while we are passing out, congratulations, this council deserves a little bit of credit for looking beyond the self-imposed restriction on the tax rate and saying, let's deliver something for the community. And that was not an easy task for us as a group, but we recognized what was important for the citizens. And I think you saw that firsthand during all of the open houses and everything, every place that this went forward. We even saw it tonight in the citizen satisfaction survey results. Nobody cares about City Hall, but they really care about Recreation Campus. So I think this is one of the proudest things we have done as a council, is deliver this for this community. So thanks for helping take our vision and making it a reality.
Councilwoman Hampton.
Yeah, to Bill's or to Councilman Stiff's point as well, yeah, I think everybody's very excited about it and going directly to their, to the, not the customer, but the citizen surveys. Yeah, this is something that a lot of people in that area are very excited about in the south of the freeway. I know I'm in central Goodyear, and it's nice, it'd be nice to have someplace closer. The other parks are great, too, but this is, this is nice and close as well. So it'll be definitely a great enhancement and a great thing that people can go and use in the area that all of Goodyear can use. So I'm excited for it as well and looking forward to 2020 to be able to go out there and have fun with my kids, too. So thank you.
Councilmember Cano.
I've been engaged in this process as a citizen, going to the meetings and being with arts and culture, and it's so exciting to be a part of it from this side. But this is a legacy project, and I'm just so thankful. It's really going to transform our community, and I just appreciate everybody's hard work.
Well, I think it's about time we voted for this. I think it's going to be an enthusiastic vote. So all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, gentlemen. Very, very pleased. All right, we're now there into the meeting. Does council have any comments, updates, requests for information?
I should report on something that I did.
Yes, go ahead.
What'd you do? What did I do? We had a Valley Metro Board of Directors meeting last week that we had to accept the City of Glendale's, I think, wise but reluctant, you know, it's too bad we're not getting the light rail farther to into the West Valley, but the citizens of Glendale were going to pay for that. So I think they did the right thing. But, so we had to go through that, we had to go through the motion of accepting their withdrawal from the light rail program. It will free up some monies for some other transportation projects, but I don't think it'll, it will help us with our southern transportation issue in trying to move some folks from the south of Goodyear more toward the north. And then, secondly, I had the opportunity for the second year in a row to present at the International City Managers Association Conference. And we talked about the manager-council relationship process. We also talked about strategic planning. But it was, it was very nice to be able to talk about the governance relation system that we put in place with our current manager's contract and talk about that with other communities. And quite honestly, most of the other, most of the managers in the room thought, oh my God, you are, you're living in Disneyland. They said, nobody would do this. And we have used that in other communities, but it was, it was nice to have firsthand knowledge as a council member and as a consultant. And I think we're going to review this later this year, but one of the things that we put in there as a council was that we would be a leader in manager-council relations in the area. And based on the feedback that I got this weekend, I think we're clearly, we're clearly there. So thanks.
Good. Any other?
All right. Well, then, city manager?
I do have one follow-up and two communications.
A follow-up from the work session, and there were comments seeking opportunities in the future before we do another study to have council input, maybe look at the study and what questions we include in that. So I've got that as a follow-up item. And then for council communications, we had the pickleball court dedication this weekend. On Saturday, September 22nd, there was a ribbon cutting for the four new pickleball courts at Goodyear Community Park. The dedication began with remarks from Mayor Lord, Nathan Torres, and two representatives from the Goodyear Pickleball Association. There were approximately 100 people in attendance at the festivities. The event also offered pro-top player demonstrations, ball throw, machine activity, new player workshops, and open play. And then, not to be outdone by pickleball, there was the Fourth Annual Rib Eating Contest. The Fourth Annual Rib Eating Contest took place this past Saturday at Texas Roadhouse in Goodyear. The event featured five officers from Goodyear PD against five officers from the Avondale PD, who had three minutes to eat as many ribs as possible. The event took three rounds because they kept tying. And finally, Avondale PD was victorious by a very slight margin, so they have bragging rights for the next year. We had about approximately 25 spectators come out to support the Goodyear team, and that's all the updates I have.
Great. Did I miss somebody in the council that wanted to say something about what they've done? I heard.
I was going to mention pickleball.
Oh, okay.
The staff did a great job putting it together, the ribbon cutting, setting everything up, and it's a good turnout and something that we could deliver to our residents that a lot of stakeholders wanted. And we were able to deliver in a fairly cost-effective way and something fairly quick. And it was a good partnership with citizens, working with staff, working with council to deliver something quickly that they wanted. So I thought it was a good.
While you were there, you were at the Dunkin' Donuts opening, grand opening on the stand.
Dunkin' Donuts. I had them both at, yeah. Uh-huh, I had them both. Dunkin' Donuts was good. It's really nice to see that they want to stay in Goodyear and build another business in it. And, pardon me? I did take, I actually gave the donuts to the office. I took one donut home for Ron, and I sent them on. We aren't going to tell Dunkin' Donuts that. I don't know. We're going to keep that a secret. Okay, well, the next meeting will be a work session on October 1st, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. and followed by a regular meeting at 6:00. And just to remind you, October 5th, 2018, at 1:00, is a council retreat. And October 6th, 2018, at 1:00, is a council, another following one. And then October 15th, 2018, at 5:00 p.m. will be a work session with no, there's no further business. Anybody here have anything want to say? Okay, this meeting's adjourned.